Okay, we'll call the meeting to order. All board members are present and accounted for. Are there any changes to the agenda? Any additions, amendments, anything? If not, I would look for a motion to approve.
Make a motion.
Motion by Pat, seconded by Kurt. Further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That is carried. At this time, we are going to close the meeting. The board has to deal with an agenda item which requires us to be closed, so I would ask everyone in the audience to be excused for the time being. Sorry about the inconvenience.
With the June 20th, approval of the June 24th.
Minutes. I'll make a motion to approve.
Kurt, go ahead and second.
What do we do?
What do we do?
Hang on.
I have to do all this for Laurie's.
The finance report.
Motion by Pat, seconded by whom on that agenda?
Kurt.
Kurt. Any other discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That carries. No scheduled presenters. Finance report. Attachment B.
It's attached, it's July. Josh isn't here tonight, but it's, again, not anything spectacular. If you have any specific questions, I can certainly answer them. It's typically the month where everything's very slow. We don't have bills coming in and...
I'll make a motion to approve the finance report.
Motion by Pat.
I'll second.
Seconded by Rob. Further discussion?
I just have a question on 40220, Bank of America.
Wait, wait, let's get down.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm down. Sorry.
Dispenditures coming. Okay, all in favor of approval of the finance reports, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That is carried. No old business showing, so under new business, there's consent agenda items which are considered routine and we can enact in one motion. If for some reason someone sees a consent agenda item they want pulled out for discussion, we can do that also, otherwise.
Just note that tonight Jake is down at the last pee-wee game. He wanted to be here, but he did want you to note that all the soccer coaches have been hired.
They're volunteers.
They are volunteers. They are referenced on that person sheet.
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
Approved by Jerry. Motion, seconded by Brenda. Other discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carry. Approval of the agenda, expenditures. Jer?
What do you have there? Question on, what was it?
40220.
4022, Bank of America.
220.
220.
Postage and express.
Postage and express.
Sixty-four hundred dollars.
Postage and express.
I'd have to look. It basically is our credit card. We purchase all of our postage for the year and we put it on that one thing so we can buy the forever stamps and things like that. We stock up for the year. That is probably our entire district postage. Bank of America, it's not from Bank of, you're thinking the bank? It's the actual credit card.
It's a credit card type.
Credit card. We charge that.
Visa.
So we pay it.
Look at that copy. Thirty-five.
I was waiting for that one to come up.
So, 40246 for this new used bus of ours, we're paying thirty-three, and then on top of that, we paid the rental.
We will get that rental back, remember, from the insurance company. We did have to pay it. We're still not resolved on that. We're still working through a few things, but that will be reimbursed. Not the bus, the rental.
And so we really haven't gotten anything back for the value of that bus as well.
Not yet, no, no.
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
Motion by Jerry, seconded by Kurt. Approval of expenditures. Any other discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That is carried. Consideration for to approve the milk bids. Attachment E.
You can see everything's laid out there pretty well for you. Kind of our usual competitors came in with those.
So Hastings Co-op came in, as usual. Dean Foods gave it a shot as well.
Correct.
Kemp's picked one up, but did not act on it. Can I assume that or not?
That would be a correct assumption. I'm not sure why they didn't fill it up.
I was surprised.
I was a little surprised too, but never got anything from them.
And we have used Hastings Co-op for the last three years, probably.
They have been remarkable. Very reliable. If we ever get overage, you know, they'll take things back. We've got credits. Been good.
What's your pleasure?
I'll make a motion to approve the milk bid from Hastings.
I'll second that.
Motion by Brenda, seconded by Rob. Further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That is carried. Bread bids, next one. And that would be attached in half. It looks like we've got two. We are currently with whom?
Pan of Gold.
We have you, Sarah Lee, before.
Yes, we have. It's been a while.
Did they like the breads? I thought that was both of them, didn't either?
Yep.
Would you open up or...
As per our last meeting, I would recommend in the near future that we make some requests of the booster clubs to include a mission statement, that we have the ability to see their year-end or yearly P and L, including our fundraisers. We'd like to see the fundraising go through the school. And we'd like to also have the parameters for requests for funds. One thing I'd like to see changed, however, is I would like to see it mandatory or required that the booster clubs that fall outside of the school boundary, that they must carry liability insurance. And I believe they can, like, the Education Foundation attaches to our insurance as an attach year in addition, and substantially less fee. And I talked to our insurance agent, and he said that would be not a problem. It's inexpensive, and just add them as additional as named. I guess as far as one of the people trying to steer the ship with the booster clubs and make sure we're square with everything, I guess if you're asking me, I would ask that to be a mandatory or requirement for the booster clubs.
I agree. I think it comes down, there's always the idea that it's a requirement or a request, and I think we have to be somewhat firm on what we want as a board. I think at this point, we just need guidelines and that these guidelines be met. And you look at other schools out there, and everyone has guidelines. It's just a protective mechanism. When we stepped away from it for a while, you know, we always think, okay, we want to do what's in the best interest. We don't, these groups are doing so much good for the school, and try and come out, trying to make them happy as well, but we have to also come back as a board and feel comfortable that what we're doing is in the best interests of the district. And I'm not sure we're there yet, because I think we don't really have any parameters set, so.
It'll be ongoing discussion, but if we're looking for a type of something I'd rather see sooner than later, would be for sure the liability insurance, just because of some of the fundraisers that are performed, students are involved in.
Can you clarify for me, so the ones that would need it are football and dance. Everyone else is covered.
Football and dance, at this point. Mat Rats have their own insurance.
I checked, all the other ones are covered, it sounds like.
So soccer probably is coming up. If soccer starts a booster club, they would have to...
I haven't, they haven't applied for it.
Nothing for anything.
I haven't signed anything on a booster club for soccer yet.
And I'm not adverse to them, being it's, they handle both males and females athletes. So Title IX is pretty much, that's an equal, equal deal there. So I, if soccer would decide to come, be in the brain of both genders to the play, they have really no issues with them coming, other than as fulfilling a requirement if that's what the board so chooses to do with the liability. Mat Rats might be a little bit different, because they, they can carry whatever insurance they want, but if they're looking...
They bring in a copy every year of it to me, so I don't have it.
So I find if, as long as they're insured, I don't care who they're insured through, personally, but I would make, my recommendation would be for the board to make it mandatory or require them to carry liability insurance.
Where are we going to go as a, as a board when it comes to additional booster clubs? Now, research has been that most schools have contracted the number of booster clubs. Are we looking to say anybody that wants a booster club can have one, as long as they fulfill these requirements? Or do we want to hold a line at this time until we get more, I guess, total compliance and see how it goes?
Is that fair to do that?
I'm asking.
I'm thinking if soccer doesn't come by the end of this year, we have an early winter retreat, I think that should be something that is discussed in that retreat. Maybe we need to do some research in between, can we hold a line?
Well, maybe we just don't allow it until we have that, that winter retreat conversation, because if we add it and then say, gee, maybe we shouldn't have added it, it's only going to be about a three-month window from the time that we may okay something until that retreat time.
So in the meantime, if they wanted to do fundraiser, they don't have a booster, are they able to even do that?
They would have to come to the school district or to Jake and request a fundraiser.
If they get added to the fundraiser list, all groups do that. You don't have to be a booster club to have a fundraiser.
I didn't know how they raise their funds, that means it's just that.
Yeah, they'll just go through Jake, and Jake will add it to the list. We'll make an amendment to that list.
I'll make the monies themselves, though. Where do those go?
They just cut through Stephanie. She keeps all those accounts for everybody. Cheerleading, FFA.
That's the whole thing, then, that comes up as do we as a board? And this is, this is the guidelines that you have to consider. Everyone that we've looked at in guidelines, they, where they do, they have to, this is what they request, that, you know, you let us know what your, you know, expenses are and what you're, which you pay out and what you bring in. One was, you know, we want to know what your fundraisers are. Now, that, that seems to have a little kickback from the booster clubs. They don't feel it's necessary, thinking that, feeling that they're their own entity and that they shouldn't have to have a, to answer to anyone in that respect. And that's something as a board, you can discuss as well. So I think, and the other one was, what we're talking about, that you...
Request.
Request liability insurance, and do we request versus require?
That'd be the require, and the other request they have to, is, and I know Mr. Hodges is working on, is the parameters for the request. So there's a sheet. In the past, the Bonner boosters, as a coach, you had to fill out a sheet and turn it into the Bonner boosters, if they're looking for money for the program, and it had to be approved through Bonner boosters. He's gonna, my understanding is he's gonna take that form and revise it, and it'll apply for all the booster clubs. So whatever booster club, in-school booster club or the segmented booster clubs, they still have to go through the same process.
One last thing I'll say, I'm sort of, is that I, and this is then done, is I think as a district, we have to be firm in what we decide and we have to follow. I think we need some sort of structure if we're going to allow this to be successful, so that there is no gray area. The reason why we're having some confusion is because we are in gray. You know, some of the Title IX is black and gray, is not black and white, it's gray, and as a district, we need to make that black and white, and that's where the problems lie, so.
I guess, I got a question on what you're saying. So are all the requests for expenditures now going to go through the principals?
It'll go through Mr. Hodges, at this point.
Okay.
That hasn't been determined, if it's going to go through Mr. Hodges or if it's going to go through Jake.
Okay.
So it'll be one of the two.
So it'll, so no matter who the boosters are, it's going to go through a member of the district?
Correct.
For approval and disbursement? Okay. Because I, what I'd written down was, I know there was a question about what they're doing with the funds and everything, and I guess, is there a way to do a do or a don't list? You know, that they agree they can't do these things with those funds, especially if they're in violation of Title IX. So if they understand better, we make that gray the black and white by the district to say, here's what we, the district has set forth, and I don't know, five things you can't do.
Wasn't that what you kind of had there, Jerry? What they were, that sheet that you had listed as to how it's all being approved? Is that something different? That it goes to the board, the expenditures?
I know other districts, well, it's required, any, any monies that are donated or brought into the district for a need or purpose, has to still be approved by the school board, which, just like money's taken in for scholarships, we approve as a board, but we never, we've never approved...
The expenditure.
Of booster clubs coming in and giving things into the district. And as a board, we're required to approve those.
But now, if it's a 503(c), they're not putting them into the district, right? They're keeping their own?
Well, but they're giving that money to the football. Football boosters is giving money to the schools for football. We as a board have to, have to okay that.
Okay.
Even if, if dance, dance as well. So that really should be in our minutes for the approval of X.
So do we need to do something for Jake, or whoever's, or Tim, whoever's going to do?
I really think it needs to be Jake. I think it has to be a 260-day employee. A lot of things go on in July. Coaches are busy up here. This is Grand Central right now, because they're getting ready for football, and, you know, they're doing all these things. I just think it's better streamlined through Jake on this one. He knows the coaches, he knows what they should be buying and not buying, too. If you really want it to be a filter, I think it needs to be Jake, in my opinion.
And Tim has kind of taken it, and he's gonna try to conform, or I guess...
Coordinate.
Coordinate.
That's a good idea.
Draw what he feels, where we should be stepping, maybe where we shouldn't be stepping, and he's going to bring that back to Kurt and I and to some of the group to let us, you know. So for right now, he's taking reins on the booster club fundraising and the booster clubs in general. So, so when we're back in school, it's back in session, and they're back to work, we'll, I'm sure we'll have more information we can update. But in the short term, I guess my recommendation would be is make the request and make a requirement for the liability insurance. And then come to board meeting.
Is everything up? Go ahead.
Yeah, you've taken, you've taken those wishes to Tim already.
Yep.
Okay.
Tim talked to me about it, too. He's definitely on board and in full agreement with that list that you just said. He's very in agreement.
And we're trying to keep it small and simple, because we know the booster clubs do a lot, a lot, a lot of good for the district and for the athletes portion, as Education Foundation does great for our district. So we're not trying to, we're not trying to deter anybody from doing anything here. We just need to, as a board, have a little bit more understanding, is probably the best term, of where the monies are going.
More transparency.
Correct.
We need more transparency. That's it.
Do you need to hear something?
Nope, this is a discussion item, and I think that if there's ultimately a vote, it would have to be when they bring in their mission statement and such, that we're able to see it okay.
Well, maybe the, was that ever a requirement right there, guys? I don't know.
Initially, it was a mission statement, when football came in.
Right, do, have we decided that that's something that they do need? Because do all these booster clubs have a mission statement?
They have a mission statement, and most of them have bylaws.
Yeah, and is that, that's what I was wanting to do there, because I don't know if we, has Jake seen them, and just to make sure that they have something.
I don't know that they've seen them, other than when they've come to the board and asked to become their own booster club.
Yeah.
Football at that time, several years ago, came back and they, they did have somewhat of a mission statement. Dance, I guess I don't recall.
They do know, I know that.
So, I believe the ones that are their own segmented booster clubs, they'll have minimum mission statements.
Okay.
Will continue to be our liaisons, I guess, with the admins and bring us this information back as it's attained.
I guess, but as far as like the liability, that I, for me personally, the sooner the better to get that through the board.
Is that something to vote on now? Just to make sure that is?
We can make a motion now to do it, or we could do it next meeting, which is...
I think you should have it in written form, so you know what you're voting on.
Correct.
Because what I'm hearing could be different than what you put down. We're going to be removing the presenters in August. I think that would be a perfect opportunity to have something, you know, Tim is putting together that document. Put down these four bulleted items, so that we're really clear on what we're voting on. Again, no need in rushing it, I think.
Right.
My opinion, I mean, but...
No, I agree, I agree.
Okay.
Good for them. I like things in writing.
Thanks, guys. Okay, item J, finance meeting update.
Yeah, I will keep this as simple as possible. The top page is just simply a memo that was sent out to the finance committee. Kurt and Bob are on that. Rob had some questions, so he's seen this document as well. I think it's worth going through just the steps, so you know exactly what's going on. I went over to the Tom Meltzer invite over in St. Peter, Minnesota, and really learned a lot on the clarification that came out after the legislative session was done. First one is the $424 that we're getting in location equity. Nine schools are getting that money, we are one of them. This money is being given to schools. You literally have to vote against it to MDE if you do not want to accept this money. You will need to do that by the next, actually, no, you'd have to do that by this board meeting if you wanted to. It would be my strong recommendation that you, that you don't do that. This is money that they are saying, we understand you are low in funds, this is what we're doing. We are going to lower your property taxes in your town to make this happen, okay? The $300 voted, board-approved voter referendum revenue, you have done the resolution, so that you're able to do that, and we'll want to do that by the August meeting. Again, putting us at that 724 number that we've been talking about all along. Now, I will want you guys to have some conversation about that. We're going above the 500 that we're currently at, but we'll get to that. Then at the finance meeting, I thought they brought up a really great idea. You know, let's round this up to a nice round number of 900, add on $176 voter-approved referendum, and let's do a tax levy. Let's make it designated money towards something. And everyone sat around the table going, that's perfect. The voters will know exactly what revenue's coming in, they'll know exactly what it's going towards. Perfect, let's do it. I left the meeting saying, okay, I'll talk to Aylers, we'll run some numbers on that. Blown away by the difference. And if you go down here, the $724, we're getting 43% of aid on that. So to put that in perspective, and you have that all in your packet here, but I'm going to make it really simple for you. $724 is costing the taxpayer $16 for a $150,000 home. Remember when Ms., you know, Aylers sent out that information prior? The $176, that little tiny amount, if we go to the voters for that, for the same home, is going to cost $103, because there's only 2%. It's in a different tier. So what they did is they came in, they said, we're going to lower your property taxes, we're going to make this affordable, we're going to give you basically $724, but we don't want you tapping your communities anymore. And we're going to do that for five years. So they're acknowledging the need. The problem is that we really need around 900, but we're going to have to be okay with 724.
We hit the wrong timing, because our referendum runs out.
Right, and we were the example school in that, again, with Tom Meltzer's big slide. You know, we go down to zero, so it looks, you know, for $16, it's the right thing to do, but you do need to have a discussion about that, because it really does matter to Josh and I, what you guys are going to decide to do. The other thing I learned is, we can't break apart that 424, you either accept or you don't, so we know where that amount. The $300 board-approved, again, you have to take that in that increment, so you can't break it apart, nor would you, because that, you're impacting the tax base. So even if you decide to do 502, because you, you feel that the voter should, you know, we should have them come to vote, it's going to cost them more. And all of that documentation is in here, and it's hard to, it can be hard to understand, but that's the simplest of terms, is that it's $103 or it's $16.
Is this for five years, then, that we can't ask for more?
No.
We could go up for a period.
Here, and I put that in the bottom paragraph. They understand that this is a glitch, and they figured that out. And that happens, after they run through all these scenarios, and Aylers, I thought, he's, he's going to say it a lot better than I can right now, but they caught it too late, like, oh, well now, what if the community was ready? You know, we've heard loud and clear from our community, we're ready now. Your referendum is running out, you've done a nice job of being transparent, you've done a nice job of spending the money accordingly. Okay, now we're ready, well now this new legislation doesn't allow us to do that. So we can, we can do it next year. And that might be better, because maybe the city will be running something where we can share costs for the election. Because an election is so expensive, when this is the only item on the ballot.
So I would agree.
If, let's say, you weren't able to for five years, and you have two-year referendum out there for $700, and it goes away, and you couldn't ask for more, you'd lose half of it, and had no ability to go back and get more. So I think that's another reason they're changing it, because we ran out, perfect storm, out, we're coming back, but let's say it one more year, your referendum, and it runs out.
Well, and, and say you did have 502 for another year, we still could add 724 to that if we wanted to. You wouldn't do that to your community. I mean, that would be, you just would never do that. But that really is what the law was designed to do, is to, you know, Northfield's at 1,300, Zambrotta's up is going to do that. You know, all these schools still around us are still at a lot more. But this is an opportunity to do some great things. I've run some numbers with 724, and, and we can start building programs again. And that doesn't mean adding things, but that means building on what we're doing well, so. We're pretty excited by this. This is a great thing. But if you guys do feel like you want to go out to those voters, if that's important to you, we really do need to start having the discussion now. And if you are going to reject the 424, I'm not making the call, but...
You need to have that examined.
Poor Chair could make that call.
You know, if we're losing that $500 impact, and we're replacing it with 300 plus an additional 176, are we, are we going backwards there? Does that make any sense? The tax impact on $500 is decidedly more than the tax impact on $300.
Correct.
Now, if we run a 176, is that tax impact less than the original 500s?
No, it is, it's much higher.
Wasn't it like an 80 before?
It was, yeah, it was...
On 150?
Seventy-seven, seventy-seven dollars for every 150.
We don't have the old 500 referendum numbers in front of us, but they were, it was under 100.
It's a great question, but this no, is still impacted more. And that, they did that to prevent you from, okay, we're already lowering this, you have to do it this way. They can't, you can't reap the benefits on both sides. You can't go out to your community and then the state try to...
Because now we're getting the 424, so.
And they'll be basing things off the 2012 home values. So when Aylers ran this, and I'll just use a general number, 50%, 50% of our taxpayers are still going to feel a decrease in their taxes, because home values went down in 2012, as all of us can attest to. So, you know, you can't guarantee that.
Where are we going to be when it comes to cuts next year, or the following year on this?
At 500, you know, with our older referendum, 500, we've always been around 450. You guys have decided to use the fund balance, you know, getting that down to about 350 every year. We've done a nice job of saving, and we've done a nice job of grants coming into cover, miscellaneous things. So we've done well, but we would have have been at 350. What this will bring us down to is about 110,000, and with our junior class leaving, we've already, I mean, just in attrition, we'll be able to do the 110, because when you've got a huge class leaving, that's going to be a natural reduction.
Beth, didn't you say that, Aylers mentioned that the 424 would be there for five years?
He is...
Both of these are, right?
They're all...
I thought they were a little uncertain about the 300.
He was, but Tom Melter was very certain at the meeting I went to, and Aylers was also.
We'd have to see what changes. In a year, we could go for a small referendum, depending on what they change.
And that's exactly what he said. They would encourage that. When they get this glitch kind of fixed, his next opportunity, maybe that's in two years, or I loved the idea of the technology referendum. So, we can say, "This is exactly what the $610,000 is going for," is an iPad initiative, or something like that. So, that people really know...
Where the money goes.
But we need to bring that tax base down. You can't tax them an extra 176 and do $103.
Right.
City's not going to raise that.
It won't pass. What would be the sense of running an $8,000 referendum?
We could be adding some industry and/or business taxes to our tax rolls in the community over the next couple of years.
We already have. This last year, you know, the industrial park is now full. The building out there is, if you've driven out in that area, add-ons galore. We have a couple of new gas stations that have come in. Mayo expanding is only helping things. Had a lot of meetings with Mayo, and the city commissioner, and Dave Maroney, you know, looking at EDA and some of those things. So, growth in Cannon Falls is, at the best, it's been about 12 years. And to see our industrial park full is definitely the tax base of where we want to be. So, yeah, I think we're going in the right direction there, I really do.
The one thing we were discussing at the finance meeting is the fact that we have cut some things sort of quick. This doesn't mean we're able to add those back. One of the things that we see is that classroom supplies and such are just about as minimal as it could possibly be. And we know our educators are dipping into their own pockets to make up the difference. And those are the kind of things we spoke of. If we'd even get a technology levy done, that would free up money into the general fund, and allow us to do some things that we should be doing. So, I'm just devil's advocate.
Yeah, I think we have to prioritize our hit list of what we can and what we need to add back, or change.
Well, it's interesting how everything's kind of coming together. You know, sitting in facilities now, you know, we're seeing some real possibilities of going, you know, to a serverless type program. And I already had a conversation with Rick Lee, our new tech coordinator, and what are some of the things that we can do there? Instead of buying all new computers that are taking up all this electricity and things like that, you know, there's an initial investment in that, but there's some rebates in going out and getting those computers and that. And so, Rick is working on that already. So, what's happening is everyone's starting to talk about the things we could invest in, which in the long run, you know, saves some money for us. So, I think everyone's still in that mindset, save, save, save. This is not the cure. But we may not be, you know, doggy paddling. We might be at a nice, strong stroke of some kind.
I sometimes wonder what kind of sticker shock there would be where you're paying $14 on a, was it $150,000? $150,000 home for $724 or whatever. But then all of a sudden, all goes away, and now you got the sticker shock, and now you need a levy of...
Right.
Now, we're paying for a levy, well, I guess the levy could be back down to not 900, but it could be less a year, so.
Well, you know, even if you look at this as a one-year plan, you can look at this every single year, and you will have to look at this every year. I mean, the way I'm understanding the law is that you will have to reject this 424 every year, if you want to reject it. So, I think you can make that decision when you want to, but the decision for this year, my recommendation is to take the 724, let's let everything pan out. Let's have our reductions go down a little bit, and let's see our programs grow and our district get even better than it is, so.
Yeah, I think one of the things I feel that we've changed is looking at one-year increments instead of the longer term. I can only say, you can only look at four years of the legislature, but really, I think one year, because so much can change.
Yeah, it really can.
Whether it be our staff, recruitment mandates, money, I think the annual should look at our budget, and not thinking out further, unless you're looking like a budget of buses or maybe technology. Yeah, God knows where we're going to be next year.
Well, we've got some big hits this year. You know, we did opt the transportation department to go get the buses, and those are things that we have to do. We've got boilers, we've talked about the facility committee, I mean, at some point, those are going to have to be replaced. You know, we had meetings earlier, those things are going to cost us money, and we have to be prepared for those things.
There's going to be some output.
Yeah.
But we're going to take this, yeah.
The big thing that needs to be said on this is, when you, you know, approve us belonging to organizations like C, Schools for Equity and Equality, they are out there fighting for this every day. And sometimes we've questioned, like, you know, Brad Lindell, you know, he's come in all the time, always wants to be a member. These are the people that are up there every day at the Capitol, fighting for these kinds of things. And they got us this equity, saying, you know, "How is it fair that Randolph's right there, and they get this, and Cannon Falls is right here, and they get this? How can that even be fair or equitable?" And so, hats off to that group, and good for you guys being committed to those organizations that are out there doing that for us, so. This is a synopsis. I know Rob told me to keep it really simple, but it's really hard to do when you get in with all these numbers.
Ask for more, cost more. There, don't ask for more, it's costing you.
You can tell that it's a governmental deal here, when they actually give you an option to refuse the money.
Yeah.
Just in case someone's going to train.
Like I said, I am not making that call.
Again, we have to reinforce that admin and our accounts payable person, Josh Davison, have done just a wonderful job in those grants, and, you know, sticking to our budget and coming in essentially under budget for the last several years. And, you know, it's allowed us to add to the fund balance, so we can take it away later. But it does add to that. And so, it's been an outstanding job by admin and Josh and Lori.
Yeah, they could cross the board.
So, this is the name that would be voted on in the August meeting.
The only thing you would have to do tonight, is I have it here, I did bring it, if you want to do the resolution to not accept the 424. At the next meeting, you will accept the 300, we will file that with MDE, and you will be getting in November, but you don't get it until the following year. But we will be approved for this only 24, if we take those actions.
We'll talk about that as well.
Yeah.
Just make sure, as long as we got time ticked, just make sure we're on top of that.
Yeah, oh, I'm on it, yeah, I know I'm missing anything.
Okay, moving down to reports. Board members?
I just want to clarify, we had that long talk last week about football coaches. I had a meeting with Josh, and he's great to talk to, he's super easy to talk to. He's very much wants us to know that he'll take any direction from the board that we give him. The campus is in question, where's that money coming, where's that money going, how does that all work? He explained that to me, which, the camp that they go to is a nonprofit camp, so once they meet the nonprofit, and everybody's paid out, every participant gets a certain dollar amount that's given back to wherever they came from. And the parents, and we're going to make it actually, we're going to make a form for next year, that if the parents want that money back, they can check the box that they want it back. If they want to donate to the football program, they can donate to the football program. He said he makes it very clear to the parents that that is an option available. If they want that money to come back to them, that's returned, they can have it. He was directed at one point, and I'm not sure who gave him the direction, but I don't believe it was anybody in the current administration staff or our current AD. That money that's been coming back, that the football program's been getting, has been going to the booster clubs, so they can use it for, other than just for paths for the student. It might be for a blocking sled or something else. But if he wants, if that needs to be changed, he'd be more than happy to change that. The other piece that he wanted me to clarify is, it was talked last week, that there was 10 paid assistant coaches. That's actually not true, there are seven, and that may or may not change. But he did want me to make note, though, the coaches that they're paying currently, collectively, with all those coaches involved and being paid, they're still paying out less for coaches paid than we were five years ago, with even less amount of coaches. So, just so everybody here knows, it's not 10 paid coaches, it's seven. You might see a lot more coaches down there. There are a lot of volunteers involved in the football program. And there are actually some requirements with the HBL, which I didn't know about, that does cost the football program money, and I believe the figure he gave was $800 as part of the HBL fee. They have to videotape their games, and they have so long to put it into a fee for the conference. That's a cost that goes directly to the football program, which I wasn't aware of. And I don't know that anybody here was aware of either, but...
I can make change of program directly.
I don't know how that all works, but it has to do with the HBL and the football conference itself. That's why you see somebody maybe up in a basket videotaping the game. As soon as that's over, Mike Johnson's actually the one that takes it and uploads it. And it's, they're given a basket basically that has to be fed to, so all, every other coach has access to it. But you have to be a part of that, and I believe the fee is $800. So, you can't just opt out and say, "No, we're not doing it." Just something that was thrown at him, I don't know if it was, I'm going to assume that was approved by all the athletic directors in the conference, but I don't know.
So, one is in, all are in, that makes it fair?
Right, right. So, I just wanted to get that clear up with the football, because I know I was the one that was concerned of the amount of coaches that are staying on the sideline, and the amount of, what we were told, paid coaches. So, I just wanted clarification that there really are only seven paid coaches.
Thanks for that.
Yeah, and it was super great talking to him. He was so, I couldn't ask for an easier conversation or a better conversation. I think we both kind of went in that meeting thinking we're going to be butting a little bit ahead. But we opened up the conversation, and he is very open and very candid, so. That's all I have on that.
Thank you. Any other board input about any particular subjects? Okay, committee reports. Policy committee, that you haven't met.
I have not.
Curriculum?
We do have five new ones that'll need to be on by September, so we'll have an August meeting pretty awesome.
No curriculum meeting.
No curriculum meeting. Facility?
Yeah, we met.
We've met a lot.
We're sick of meeting.
We're sick of meeting.
Just started.
Now, you're meeting in meeting rooms.
I know.
What do you got? Any updates to this?
You know, we met initially, there's a company called CTS from Missouri, that is an energy company that basically focuses on efficiencies. And then they gave the presentation, it was a 10-year plan. We looked it over at our first meeting, and we didn't want to, we wanted to have another meeting to talk about it, after the first meeting presentation. It was a, I thought it was a pretty good presentation, but it got a lot of us thinking of, what do they do? So, we met two days later, early one morning, and I think what we did is, we sat down, we discussed what they're proposing. And in the end, what we came down to, I think, were two areas of energy savings. One is electricity, one is gas. And XL does a pretty good program, and Dave's over there, he can talk more about it, where they'll assist and help anyone to become more efficient in electrical use. So, our number one hitter, because that's a 365-day use power, is to focus on trying to save electricity, and all their voice, Tim had some good ideas. I know Dave's been working on this.
He's brought XL in, and he's working, not with Dave, because there's a lot of rebates available that we need to start taking advantage of. Everything from finding out how efficient your boilers are, to lighting programs. There's just, there's a whole array that we're not taking advantage of that needs to be taken advantage of. And Dave got ahold of XL representative, and he did come in last Friday at 11, correct? And is helping with that progress as well. There's some things I think we've missed in the past, but I think there's also, it's a good learning experience for everybody. There's some programs out there that's going to be very beneficial for the school, and there's a lot of rebate money available. I won't say a ton, but there's plenty of rebate money available for studies to be done. And if, once you do a study, you have to take action. Some of those actions, I believe, could fall under some of the health and safety requirements for our facilities.
Did he comment on what he thought of the newer part of the facility, how it's being run now, as to...
Who, oh, XL?
Yeah.
Dave would have to comment on that, I guess.
I didn't hear anything on that.
Okay.
No. Now, as far as, I guess, when CTS started looking at things, I mean, they haven't really looked at numbers. As far as with XL and stuff like that, they realize that we have a lot more equipment with the new addition. You know, our kitchen probably got 12 times more equipment than what we used to have, stuff like that. So, for them to, you know, say exactly how much more it's costing for each section of the building, I mean, we haven't gotten into that. But, I say, the guy was really, I mean, I was excited to talk to the guy, he was excited to talk to me. I mean, they have a ton of stuff out there that we can do, and put connection and stuff, and...
Our assistant rebates.
And actually, the rebates, they even added, like, a virtual desktop, and, you know, computer systems and stuff like that. So, there's a lot of different things that we can take advantage of. And, you know, provide us with a lot of different opportunities to, you know, make things more efficient, save money, and make it a lot more comfortable in all of our buildings and school districts, so.
Just some simple things.
We're too early.
There are a lot of simple things I can fix.
But we're too early. I mean, he just came in for the initial visit. There's going to be some things that might require capital expenditure, some things that may not, just tweaks to certain systems. But it's actually now almost going towards technology, like Beth was saying. When Tim was here, going to a server, basically a server-based system. So, all the pieces become a little box that is solid-state, and you run that, and then everything goes to one place. It'll save on the heating, it'll save on the fans that they run, it'll save on replacement costs. So, we're starting to get other areas into the energy savings. So, it's not just going to be the buildings, it's going to be everything in the buildings, from the lights to the comfort of the rooms, the temperatures, to the technology side of it. But I would say we're on step one of hundreds to get there. It's going to be a long process, we'll get done, and this one, we may start gas, because that's when we start to look at our gas usage.
That's so you can do efficiency testing in your boilers, and see how efficient they really are.
Mary, the one you did, that's, we're like 85 on our old, old boilers, 85% efficiency.
Which for those, that size boilers, actually, for that age and that size, that's awful good.
Yeah. But you're in the older 90s now, but 85, 7%.
And I don't know that anybody in the facilities group was comfortable looking at a 10-year contract with the group.
I wasn't.
I know Dave's been down that road, he's been there, done that, and doesn't have much interest in committing to a 10-year contract on something like this.
Is this just a repackage thing of the Johnson controls we went through 10, 15 years ago?
To a certain degree.
Except there is no, they own nothing. They subcontract out everything. They don't have any equipment that they own.
It was substantial savings, but...
We can get there. We can.
Cool.
Okay.
I'll wait till I see it. I'll bring another company in.
Yep, no, and we wouldn't say that.
I need all those. You guys can't leave the room.
Okay, Supes report?
It's attached, and I kind of talked about everything there, so I do have to pull this back.
It's attached in...
It's a short one.
It really is. It's, you know, it's just been a really busy summer with strange things. You know, last year was like the flood, and this year, it's, you know, been a lot of other situations. A lot of hiring this year. I mean, if you look at your last five agendas, it's been substantial, a lot of people have hired, so. It's just been really busy. And this legislative session has, you know, just taken a lot of time, but it's good. It's, I'm not in the office much, I'm busy running around, but...
Head of operations, Dave?
I guess, as far as, I say, we talked about the energy things here and stuff, summertime, so getting the buildings ready for the next school year and stuff like that. Got a lot of things that are going right now, that we hope to complete within the next month here. But, I'd say, high school and the elementary school, other than the gyms and some hallways, are just about cleaned already, so. And we focus on other things after that and stuff, so it's been nice not to have to deal with the things that I dealt with last summer, so. It's been a lot nicer.
That's it? Thank you. Principals report, I see none.
Jake really wanted to be here. Like I said, it's the last day of Pee Wee baseball, and he's got to run bats and stuff around, so he's doing the community ed stuff.
Okay, so, community ed as well. Item G, upcoming meetings, regular board meeting, 8/26/2013.
You can remove that presentation.
CTS program.
Yep, just remove that.
All right, we're down to public forum. I don't see a lot of public forum folks here.
Jamie's got something.
Jamie, you got something?
Nope.
What?
Okay, we will close that area, so I guess if we have nothing else, I would propose to a German.
A second.
Rob, say aye.
Brendan is kidding. I was going to wait for him to stop talking.
I know.
Any discussion, all in favor of a German, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.